Call this meeting to order and we will stand with pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
I'm surprised when I get it out and turn around.
I always launch my chat to Connor and Phil.
I haven't prepared for it.
You did it every time.
All right, our next item on the agenda is a moment of silence. Is there any one we want to lift up? We mentioned that our communications staff person, Kieran Sence, is in Nepal, which had an earthquake. We did, was able to, Matt reached out to her and she's okay. They slept through it. And but other people in the house did run out and let them in the house, but they're fine. So she wants to, really keep her in your thoughts and prayers for the rest of her trip is a safe word. Anyone else? Okay, let's see if anyone's online, so if we can just bow our heads for a moment. Yeah, thank you very much. The minutes were circulated. I know not everybody received them, but I did not see any edits. You do have it in your package. You're welcome to read over them if you want, and we can come back to this. Otherwise, I will ring this in motion.
Remove that we accept the meeting minutes from October 11th, 2023.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you very much. All right, Audit Committee report, everyone has received information. You got the agenda, right? So you did see that in the motion. Okay, on the audit. Matt, do you want to make any comments about it? Or the audit, the members of the council who were...
Sure, so the Audit Committee met with staff and council member literally last week. And we made a few corrections to the FY23 audit based on some recommendations. Otherwise, they have requested the council move forward and accept the FY23 audit.
Any questions?
I would just share that we have a very diligent and active audit committee, and I want to thank Leslie Wilson, who's here tonight, and the other members of the Audit Committee, Jeff and Kerry. Thank you. And there was, if you noticed in the packet, one material deficiency notice, but it was actually quite minor and really due more to an error of minty bank to not collateralizing the account with strictly remedy, thanks to Susan's diligence. Overall, our unders continue to be very pleased with the way the town staff are managing the financials. So I want to thank everyone for their work.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, all right. Thank you all very much. The Dupont Avenue variance, I believe we have, I'm sorry, Margie Rogers is here, but Matt, do you want to go ahead and step by?
Sure, Mayor and Council, Margie Rogers from 3419 Dupont Avenue is here, receiving to request the variance for a gate that was installed in the front plane of the property. There's an existing four-foot fence. There was a gate installed behind the fence, but still in the front plane of the property to help prevent from individuals cutting through the property to get over to the creek. There is a pretty steep drop-off from her property to the adjacent property. Counsel received the staff report in support of the variance requirement. On to the podium.
Margie, just give your name for the record.
Margie Rogers. And it's a somewhat unique situation because my front yard has a picket fence around it and then a smaller retaining wall, as you can see in the photo. And the gate that I had put in, the top of it, while it's six feet, it's, the top of it is almost level with the existing picket fence, which is above the three-foot retaining wall. And because, because there's those two, with a smaller retaining wall and then a small walkway that leads to my backyard, and then this very tall, like ten, in ten feet in some places, it's, it's dangerous if people walk down there and don't know that the wall is there. So you can't even see it from Dupont Avenue, people walking their dogs, children. They could actually fall over that wall. It's right at the corner of the gate is where the wall begins. So, and the footing on that side of my house is, has become quite unstable over the years. So, and I have had problems with people trespassing. It seems to be unclear that that is private property there. They seem to think that it's a, I don't know, that it's a throughway.
Because the fence, they think, oh, that's the property.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. Does anybody have any questions?
Counsel, we did receive support from the two adjacent neighbors for the six-foot gate.
It's really just, it's also more, I think stops people a little bit more than if it was just a small gate, you know, so that somebody could just hop over.
Right.
Mentioned that there would be added expense for me to have to have somebody that now alter it, you know, cut it down, you know, in the uppers of $150 to $200. You know, spent quite a bit of money on the fence.
Thank you. I mean, the, just keep letting the nandina grow, they're not going to see it. I've heard that there several years ago, to sort of stop people, but it wasn't enough. Need thorns. Counsel, any questions? For staff or for Mr.?
So we're just giving a signal for a resolution for next time.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, so the issue is if the, if the gate was four feet, there would be no variance request. The variance requested because the gate is six feet high in the front plane of the property. And then if counsel liked to proceed, we just need a motion, or not even a motion, just direct the staff to put together a resolution for the December 13th council meeting. Yeah, I mean, we looked at this as a, as a safety issue, and that's why the staff was supportive. This is, I know, this is why we have a variance process.
Yeah, I drove by earlier today and that, it is not obtrusive, you can't see it very well. I would just prefer that a resolution not reference like the cost to bring it into compliance, or, you know, that it was built without a permit. I would just like to strictly say that because of topography and, and safety, that we would support this.
Can you, yeah, go back to the podium?
Yeah, so I, I appreciate that. And I, I think that when I originally put the gate up, I had already applied for a permit previous years, but I did not apply for one. I applied through the county, but not through the town. So that was my mistake. And so I took care of that problem, but I've forgotten what I was gonna say. Oh, it isn't, it's on the southwest corner. It's not like it's my front gate. So it's, you know, it's, it's set back quite a bit.
No, and just so you, just to clarify, I support the variance. We do have standards that we have to apply.
Right.
And I want to stick to them so that we don't have other people come in and say,
Sure.
"It would cost me so much to fix it," or "I just want to stick to this, that, this standards in the code."
I understand.
And have a clean approval.
Okay.
That doesn't set a precedent, so.
Yeah.
Don't worry. Thank you.
Does anybody in the audience have a question? Hands? Okay. Somebody like to make a motion to direct the staff to do a resolution?
We need a motion?
You want to just do it?
Just direct us to draft a resolution and support the resolution. We'll have it for December.
Okay. Thank you very much. You'll have, will do the resolution in December, and you'll be good to go. And you are not the first person to get a permit from the county and not realize you have to get one from the county. You are not alone in that, for sure. Anyway. Probably because I've been doing things recently, and I was not finishing this task until I was born. Wasn't exactly sure what direction I was going to go. Completely understand. Okay.
Thank you.
Right, so that looks like we're done with the mayor and town council. You know, I realize does anybody want to give a report, Darren?
I don't have any time to report this morning.
Okay. Anne?
Well, I have some exciting news, which you've all probably heard. Sustainable Maryland Bronze Certification. Congrats to the Sustainable Kensington team that worked so hard on this with a lot of support from Alex Marini, as well as Susan and Matt and Nate, as a co-chair with me. We're really pleased that within a year, we were able to document enough solid work within the town to support bronze certification. And the group, I don't know Nate, if you want to add anything, the recent meeting, but basically got together, had a little celebration, and at school speed ahead, another set of actions that will keep us busy for a few years that were outlined in our action plan. So thank you everyone for your support.
Well done.
Otherwise, I also want to mention, you've probably seen.
More spaces.
Yes.
For the recertification and for the silver designation.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've got some work to do.
It's sustainable for at least.
Don't go anywhere else.
I did want to mention, you've probably seen, still plenty of volunteer activity with Lead Warriors. And in terms of upcoming events, don't forget December 7th, please turn out for the town menorah lighting at 6 o'clock. We have a lovely community event. It would be wonderful to see a lot of townspeople there. I think everyone understands it's going to challenge any time for the Jewish community, and we'd love to have a big turnout for a special community event that evening at 6 o'clock.
I thought we had listed it 5 o'clock on the town. I thought I got the number. I thought it was 6 on the wire.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine to get people home from. Yes.
Yeah.
Just sure, let's see what we had on Friday. Okay. Neil?
Just to echo everything Anne said about the Sustainable Kensington effort, I think we're all really proud, but there is more work to do. We did have a potluck, little celebration at one of our members' homes on Monday. Tracy also attended. It was really nice just to kind of get together. And I think we should do more things like that for the town committees. You know, we're always meeting in rooms or Zoom, and I think it was really nice, a nice setting, but it was fun to celebrate.
It's, it's good, but just keep in mind that when you have it in somebody's private home, it's because the meeting should be open to the public.
Yeah.
So it just makes it a little harder.
Yeah, and it was very informal, so.
Yeah.
But it, it's, it, again, everyone was really proud and very excited to keep moving on, and we'll have new members also joining to participate. So the only update I have is on the pedestrian bicycling access and safety working group. We held our, the event that we sponsor each year, our Walktober event. This was done the last Saturday in October. I unfortunately didn't personally participate because I was out of the country for work, but I did get reports from everyone who did participate from the working group and said it was really beautiful weather. They sent photos. Participation was a little more than last year. I think we had maybe 20, 25 people. And want to thank also again Alex for all of her help with putting together the shirt order and doing a lot of help with logistics, as well as Matt pushing, I guess pushing NZI to, to make sure that they got the, the repairs done that we were going to show off on the Port Chop and the St. Paul intersection, some recent improvements. But overall, very good feedback. And I want to also thank the businesses who participated in our kind of experimental voucher program where they gave, we gave out vouchers for businesses to, for people participating to use at the local businesses that are, that agree to be part of it for $10 towards whatever purchase they wanted to, to make. So they'll, they'll recoup that at the town's expense. So I think, you know, I haven't heard yet if businesses are actually receiving those, but we shall see. So it's a, it's a way that we can do that to encourage people to frequent our businesses in, you know, in relation to our events in the future. That's it.
Mainly, you know, thanks to Matt and Alex for Halloween setup. So talking to the neighbors along St. Paul, the cones and barricades that we used to narrow the street, slow traffic down, but also widen the walkway for trick-or-treaters worked very well.
Okay.
Great. And it really, I mean, we stood out at the corner of Dupont and St. Paul for a while talking there, and they, and it did a great job of slowing traffic down. Lexington is going to need a little attention next year. It's mainly a parking issue. But as far as safety, flow of pedestrians, and reducing the speed of traffic, it turned out to be very successful.
Do we want to put no parking on Lexington?
The, my only concern would be the streets that we are closing off, Fairgate, Perry, are they parking there? I will say, you know, the challenge where the people who are coming from outside of town who don't know where to park, and they just, the GPS takes them up to Perry and they just try to find the closest. So there were a few people who, you know, they parked in a few driveways. A very interesting 12-point U-turn in the middle of Lexington, because they thought they saw a parking spot, and that was the, the curb cut. And when I pointed out that they were boxing a driveway in, there were adult words. So, but, but by and large, from a safety and, and small kids being out in the dark, it worked really, really well. So. And as did Scary Perry and now Fairgate as well, and all the residents and neighbors there who are making that a great event at their own personal expense, a big thank you because it was again a wonderful, family-oriented, I mean, I can tell you, all the parents deeply appreciate these car-free areas to trick-or-treat. It was great.
How did the other neighborhood receive it?
Oh, Kensington Heights?
Yeah.
The neighborhood in Kensington Heights that, because the person that had brought this to our attention.
Well, he's on.
I mean, he's on St. Paul, but he's not within the town.
Right. Carl loved it. And he's, he sits across, he's right at the apex of the problem, and, and so he, I had thought he would email and talk to me, because I asked for his feedback directly, but I talked to him, and he was just like, "This worked great." And because we both have mutual friends that live behind on that section of Fairgate, we both felt great that we weren't redirecting traffic through another neighborhood that had no sidewalks. So altogether, that side of town worked really well.
You know, it's a tempting to share with other communities.
Yeah, yeah, that's great.
Anything else?
That's it.
Well, just have a couple little things. At our last month's chapter meeting, we did bring up the, Sue Ellen, our town attorney, was present there for the meeting, and Darren was, I think he was the only other one on the call, it was Zoom, and she talked about the updating on the streetlights and how they've had some good negotiation with Pepco and the Public Service Commission. So I would like her to come in December to give us an update. Seems like it is a better deal now. I know the Sustainable Kensington group has mentioned their concerns regarding certain LED lighting. So I think that's something too that we would want them to look at regarding what, because I'm not sure how much we get a say in what LED lighting goes in there. I'm not 100% sure, but Sue Ellen would be the one.
Okay. We saw examples on our Sustainable Maryland walking tour. Not only LED light, but like the direct light down.
Right.
You're not having like.
Did you see it? Were you, did you do it during the evening?
Yeah. Where I was pointing out.
I did notice up at Wheaton on the side where Party City is, that they have put in LED lighting in there. I'm not sure. It's similar to what we put in our pool lights. So, but it's facing down. I think ours is like this. There's a space down with a cap on top, so. So, yeah, I mean, like everything else, there's probably 100 different kinds of LED lighting that you can probably use, and what is the best one? For, there was a mention of concern about insects and some others, bats was brought up, things like that.
And slight pollution.
Yeah.
I know that the, the pedestrian bicycling working group had worked a little bit on this too because of the safety issue. So maybe it's something that we could go, look at together.
Yeah, so I think, but I think having Sue Ellen here to talk, give us the updates, it definitely, not necessarily sold that it's good for us to do, but I think definitely there's some improvements there.
Has anybody done any back of the envelope calculation for what it would cost us to acquire them?
Yeah, we can't afford it.
This is why we need the update on negotiations.
Yeah, right, well.
That was the old, was that the new update?
Yeah, the old ones are just.
Yeah, what Sue Ellen had told me was, is that a couple of the other down counties are going to do this. They are not looking to replace the lights. What they're going to do is just switch out the guts. So it's more manageable financially. So they're not actually going to change the fixtures. They're just going to use existing fixtures, switch out the guts, the LED, so it's more manageable. You know, I'll let Sue Ellen kind of explain that more in December. But it's just, I don't know how realistic it is financially for us, but it's something that we can look at. And then there's, as the mayor knows, there is some concern on my end about taking over utility for small staff.
Right.
We have a lot of other projects. We're not like the Chevy Chases, you know, we have ridges, we have storerooms, we have commercial districts. So these are things we need to take into consideration, at least on a short term.
Is it an all or nothing?
I don't know. And Sue Ellen will be able to provide more information. And there's a couple municipalities down county, like I said, Somerset, Glen Echo, Chevy Chase View, they're, they're moving forward with theirs.
Town and Chevy Chase.
Town and Chevy Chase.
Section five.
Yeah. You know, they, again, their responsibilities aren't quite ours in their town, so they have a little more flexibility, but it's something that we can certainly look at and see what. See.
Yeah, I don't think, I mean, they have minimal if that business district, and so it's, you know. They're supposed to be, Pepco did alert us that they were going to be sending in auditors or to just count. They had the.
We had requested an audit.
Yeah.
We don't know how many streetlights we have. Our numbers are not matching up with their numbers, and they haven't for many years. They agreed to an audit. They're basically going to send in a contractor. I mean, it's just going to be a guy in a hard hat and a white truck, and he's going to go around and count the lights, so.
It is, go ahead. Is it just a paper audit, or are they going to put it into GIS so we can actually?
I don't know. My guess is they're just going to try to correct the bill right now. So we, we think we have somewhere between about 298, 315. We're not really sure. They'll confirm that with us. And.
My question was whether the audit would encompass anything like the age of the fixture or the state of the picture, because.
Nothing of either, but I'm pretty sure the fixtures are older than me, so.
Yeah.
And they're rusted out if you look at them.
Yeah. So anyways, so we're going to get an update. Um. Also, good news. If you haven't noticed, the Don Perez, it looks like they're actually going to open. They are, LA reported that they painted the outside. They hired Nicole Berger to do a mural, so it's number 23 that it's coming up on. And a lot of the storage stuff came out, you know, leaving, so they did get their warehouse and so, and they have applied for a sign permit or working to get.
Yeah, so Alex and I spoke with the owner a couple weeks back. They were looking to secure a warehouse. They're using the existing location of the warehouse, with their brick and mortar, so they're spring. And then once they were going to be able to secure that, they need to build out the warehouse, get a walk-in fridge. So we were told about six months, and that was in October, so.
But they look like they're moving a little faster.
They are.
So hopefully they'll be able to. Which would be great. Um, another item, Veterans Day is on Friday. Remind this council that the, and the residents that the office will be closed, Town Hall will be closed on Friday. Also, the Brookwood School will be doing observance on Veterans Day down at the Ernest Memorial Park at 11:11. And I'll send out an email on the list of inviting people who would like to get to have an observance. If they would like. There will be trash picked up as usual, no change in that. Of course, I think everybody knows that leafing, sorry. Oh, yes, we've heard it, yeah. Anyway, staff would also like me to remind everybody that we are collecting toys for Tops through December 14th. So when you come to the Christmas tree lighting or the menorah lighting, or just stop by Town Hall, there is a box in the vestibule outside of the drill hall. Darren said it was helpful. I just want to pass out to the council all the upcoming events that we had. Sorry, but there are so many. There are 10. I know all of these 10 events are events that the council has the opportunity to attend. I think we only have, Darren, were you able to go to committee for Montgomery?
Oh, I can, yeah, I can do that.
That's on the 15th?
Of December.
Of December?
Yeah, that's fine.
And, and then we have, so that would be the three of us. And I'm going to reach out to some other people and, and then some of our elected officials, and to, and then staff will fill in as well. How about the Montgomery Chapter Holiday Party that's on the 6th? We can all have the opportunity to congratulate the mayor-elect, Monique Ashton, which is exciting, for Rockville, the city of Rockville. And.
Do you have any time?
My guess, it's probably in the 6 o'clock range. I don't have the time. It is a dinner, and it's up in Rockville, so I think it's the same place we've been.
That hotel?
Yeah. You don't need to tell me now, but when the, when Andy Harney sends in the notice, we'll need to get Susan to send her a check anyway. So please let Susan or me know if you're able to go. It is a, you know, it's a holiday party event, which can sometimes be a little bit overwhelming here, but it is a great networking opportunity.
It is.
So it's really important to come. And then I will resend it to everybody. There's some really good speakers coming up for our chapter meeting. So I hope everybody, you know, we have our chief of police will be Marcus Jones, will be a speaker. Mrs. McKnight for our superintendent will be speaking. And then, then coming up will be our dinner with the council and then, of course, the county executives. So those are all good meetings to attend. So, okay, so you'll let me know on the chapter holiday party event, thank you. And then the other events are here in town. We are having the Kensington Ken. It's having a business holiday party next week on 11/15. You're welcome to drop by. It's for the business community. It'll be here at Town Hall in the math room. So they're busy putting that together. And then, and KHS in December is also having a, an event. Okay, so I'm sure there are other things that are filling your schedule, but it's, I just wanted to make sure everybody had these dates on their radar. Okay. Okay. Between now and New Year's is a very busy day. I think that's everything I've got. Does anybody in the audience or online have a question for any of our reports? Okay, not seeing any hands. All right, so we will move on to, from the town manager and staff.
Just a couple updates. Millenium paving for Friars' Norm and St. Paul, along with Fairgate Avenue is scheduled for after. Uh, just a couple of updates. Uh, Millenium paving, uh, for Priors Noam and, um, St. Paul, along with Burghardt Avenue is scheduled for after Thanksgiving. Um. The ten-six-hundred block of St. Paul will have a traffic counter sometime in the next week or two. Uh, we had a request for a speed home, so we're doing a traffic count first. Uh, and then we'll present that to the Mobility and Traffic Committee, probably. Early in the year, once we schedule a meeting to review, and then they can go through the, uh, process for an addition for the speed home.
You know, just out of curiosity, where?
It's gonna be right in front of Carrie Thompson's house.
Yep.
Yeah, it's mid-block, um, so we have. We have some limitations on the street.
And she does know about it.
Uh, she will know about it. Uh, it's gonna be put up probably next week, maybe. And we'll let, um, Carrie and Rich know.
Yep.
Um, it's gonna go just to the south of their driveway apron. Um, we'll keep it up for maybe three or four days. We need about four hundred data points. And then, um, we'll kind of get an idea what the speed is on the street and determine if the petition's appropriate. And, um, we'll be, as you mentioned, we'll be leaving through December fifteenth. Um, just for residents, please do not put your leaves in the street. We've already had a few incidents. And, uh.
The tree box is this big.
It's, yeah, I mean, Connor is not the only one that has a problem where you either don't have. A place to put them.
Get out of the sidewalk.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, you put them in the middle of the sidewalk is basically, cause then you have bushes, I think, and a tree and it's not, yeah.
Strang across the park.
The, uh, the SFS sign, which is the sign that will show your speed. Uh, Metropolitan by the Dog Run, um, should be in by the end of the month. Um, and we've ordered the new blinking flash, uh, stop signs that should be in sometime late December, early January. Um, we are scheduling a meeting, um, with Derek Gunner, District Engineer for State Highway Administration to address a couple of questions and then we'll probably schedule a quarterly meeting in January. We're trying to get the sign on University to advise of our restrictions on St. Paul. Uh, we're looking for an update on the rapid flashing beacon for Wheaton Street. Um, and a number of other issues.
Yeah, they're running out of time on that one. Supposed to be in this year.
Be a hundred dollars richer.
This year.
Bet myself that it wouldn't happen.
Bet yourself.
I'll update council once we have that meeting, um, and then we'll schedule a quarterly meeting. Um, typically with Nate and, uh, Darren, Tracy and I.
Alright, yeah, it's very frustrating. Working with us. It mean well, it's just. Anything else? Council, any questions for the?
So the quarterly meeting is worth, uh, maybe as you're already doing, but reaching out to Paul and Kate Stewart's office.
To attend those.
Just attend the quarterly.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
And Jared.
Jared, yeah, Jared's on the State Highway, yeah.
Actually, it was during the meeting with Jared when he promised to get it in, the, the rapid flashing beacon for Wheaton by December, by December. Remember he was on that call?
Yes, he was on that call, so maybe we should call him and say, where's our rapid flashing beacon, Jared? You were on that call.
I will give him a call.
Yeah, give him a call. Okay. Alright. Any questions for staff? Nope. Okay. Alright, thank you very much. Let's move down to ordinance resolutions and regulations.
Uh, Mayor Council, we are removing resolution R dash nineteen dash twenty-two point three. Um, we needed to, uh, revise the scope of the work for the CCTV. Uh, the store grade analysis, uh, following a meeting with Montgomery, um, Parks last week. Um, so Brutus and Engineering are gonna revise that. Hopefully go as a proposal in the next couple of weeks. And then we'll have a resolution for you in December. Uh, this is to evaluate some of the flooding issues we are having. Um, essentially between Armory Avenue and the outflow. Uh, sorry, the outfall on Washington Street. Um, we're just. Needed to expand it a little bit to, um, figure out what's going on, so we'll have some more answers.
Matt, does this include the analysis of the park? Like we were discussed.
Um. So we are getting quite a bit of pushback from Montgomery Parks on that. Um. Uh, Rune, who's our hydraulic engineer with Brutus, um, is going to address that in a letter. That we can maybe take somewhere else. Um, they are against any kind of stormwater management. They're against any, uh, containment system beneath the park. Uh, what they are looking to do is expand the banks at the base of Washington Street. They'd like to remove the flap gate. We're concerned about that because we believe, um, additional flooding will happen where it's not happening now. Um. We, we are looking to address a number of issues, but, um, I, I will imagine. I imagine that we'll need to, uh, take this to the county council for some help.
Yeah, because I mean, it's one thing for them to be against. Against it, I guess, on in concept, but if they have seen an analysis that shows. The feasibility of it and some cost figures and.
Rune's gonna run some modeling for us, uh, to give us a little more data. Um. We'll see. I, I don't wanna say too much right now, cause I just don't know, but they're clearly against any use of the park at any level.
Alright, so. Okay.
Being in a walking town.
No reason, just don't like it.
Uh, we can.
So, uh, we're gonna skip down to, um, number two. So Mayor Council, before you receive news, resolution number R dash twenty dash twenty-two point three. A resolution of the Mayor and Town Council of Kensington accepting a monetary contribution, you know, one hundred thousand dollars. From the Moles Manor Team Senior Housing LLC to be used for traffic and parking enforcement within the town of Kensington. Um, council, this is at the request of staff. Um. Within the agreement, settlement agreement and mutual release between, uh, the neighbors, um, for an improved Kensington and Knowles. Single living, uh, we have to, the council has to accept the funding. And in order for us to accept that and put it in FY twenty-five budget, uh, we'd like to generate as revenue so we can. Appropriate it within FY twenty-five, which we'll begin working on in, in February. There is an exhibit to this that explains the agreement. Um. And really, we just kind of wanted to open this up for discussion and see if the staff will look forward.
Can I make my statement? I have to, like, like, perennial statement, because I, I, I have to, um. Recuse myself from the discussion because as a private citizen, I was part of the group that led to the, um, the file of the petition that led to this. Um, this. Funding and settlement. Uh, so the town's ethics commission has advised that even though there's no. Direct conflict of interest they see, just to be safe, to recuse myself from the discussion, so.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any discussion? I have a question. Um, so Matt, you were describing, you would like to move. Those forwards that it may treated as revenue this year to be appropriated next year.
Correct.
And given the stated terms of the agreement. Intended use to the funds, have you already been discussing with staff how the funds may be able to be used in twenty?
So we're, we're limited within the agreement on how the funds can be used. Uh, they essentially have to be used for public safety, specifically for some kind of traffic or parking enforcement. Um, I mean. You know, we're, we're looking at this as taking it as revenue and appropriating it in FY twenty-five within a public safety budget. Uh, specifically toward what we would use for our secondary enforcement with Montgomery County Police. And which would allow us to. Um, we do have a fourth position officer open that we could use towards it, although it is currently funded. Um, and it would also allow us to possibly use some funds in some other locations to address some traffic mitigation issues, specifically at the intersection of Priors, Mel, Metropolitan.
Any in the audience have a question? You went online? I don't see any hands. Um, could get a motion?
But, um. Since he's on the call, I, I see that L, L car is on the call and he was party to this, um. If, if he has any feedback, I'd want to hear it now.
Okay.
Um, yeah, thank you for, um, offering. I don't have any, uh, comments to offer.
Thank you, Alan. Yeah, Leslie, yeah.
Leslie Olson, Wheatley Street. Um, so is this the deal where this is escrow money? And then if it's not used, it goes back with after a certain point? So.
Correct, yes.
Not entirely, not back to the developer.
No.
If there's a secondary use, if the town does not take it. Inside of the settlement agreement, it states that it would go to an agreed upon part of Montgomery County Government with the intended use of developing a. Community center at the HOC property, which is not. A actual plan.
Okay, yeah, I remember reading.
Yeah.
Okay.
What's that? Oh, John? Oh, gosh, I barely see that little.
Alright. Um, thank you. Um, I guess I have a few thoughts and I know obviously this has been something that everybody's discussed, um. Um, a lot and, um, it's important to have the conversation in a way that is, um. Um, appropriate. I, I guess there are several points I'd make and I'll fold in some questions. The first is my understanding, um, that we're at a point where we need. The town needs to essentially signal that it is accepting and being a partner of, um, um. Being a recipient of this hundred thousand dollars that. Even though it was not part of the, uh, original deal, it was a deal done, um, by, I guess, twelve or so. Um, uh, folks in the community who, um. Um, I know shakedown's not an appropriate term, but, but, um, um, pressured the developer into, um. Making this, writing this check in exchange for being able to go forward and not being tied up in, you know, in long litigation. And I know that the hope and intent was that for, um, the people, a number of the people who were financing this lawsuit. That they would be able to get the, um. Town to have dedicated funds for. Traffic, um, um, mitigation in their neighborhood, um, in, in their particular part of the town. And, um, I guess part of what concerns me about. The whole thing is, A, a precedent that gets set. I mean, when Warner Mansion comes online, um, or something else. Does it sort of inspire somebody to, um, um, turn around at the last minute and say, listen, I, uh. I, I would really like some money for my pet thing and I'll tell you what, if you wanna go ahead and, 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 um. And contribute money via the town, I'll go ahead and, and let it go forward. But more importantly, the idea of money for things like the traffic litigation seems like it, um. In, in order for it to be sustained, we would have to keep kind of coming up with, with that. Um, the idea of the. Police being used, and I, I, I think it's about seventy thousand we're currently spending on, on, um. Uh, police, uh, enforcement. I know folks near Kent Street feel strongly, obviously the north side, there's issues, Washington Street. And Baltimore and Pitchfork have their own. So we see these officers often just sitting there. Um, they don't actually write many checks be, I mean, uh, many tickets because people. They're, they're, um, they're dissuaded when they see the officer and they only do it when they don't see the officer, but even the tickets that they write, the town doesn't get the money for. So. I, I guess one thing that I'm wondering is, could this hundred thousand dollars that we're being forced to take? Um, uh, supplant that seventy thousand and maybe that seventy thousand could be freed up for some of. More substantive kind of policing in the form of, um, um, pursuing, um, things like the, the group that, that robbed Roffies recently or. Or catalytic converters that are being taken from cars or things that, that are normal Montgomery County Police don't have the resources or time to do. But Kensington could have. Um, um, some benefit from. So I, I guess the bottom line of what I'm saying is. I, I understand why the mayor and council are feeling. Kind of like they have to do this and have to accept it, cause you don't wanna walk away from a hundred thousand dollars and all. It, I think it sets a bad precedent, but it, can we have a more thoughtful conversation so that we can, um, make sure that. Um, it indeed app adds maximum value to the most number of people in our town and is not, um, uh, simply, um, kind of, uh. Um, a, 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 um, a transaction that, that really was intended, uh, to just. I think benefit one part of our community. And I recognize that that's a, that I just said up a lot, but, um. My sense is, it's kind of an elephant that is in the room that needs to be sent. Thank you for listening.
Okay.
Do you want me to?
Sure.
I'll, I'll, I'll try to address some of these things, John. Um, I mean, I certainly share and have voiced frequently my concern about this setting a precedent. The idea that this money would be, you know, for the benefit of. Certain parts of town was a non-starter for us from the beginning, when, when it was, that was sort of the, as you say, the hope. And, and it is not earmarked. It is, you know. The only limitation is that it be used for the traffic and, and parking enforcement. Um.
Public safety, which is a pretty big word.
Right, um, so we are not tonight. Uh, allocating money towards any particular use. We are simply. Considering in, in this resolution that, uh. We, we would give to the escrow agent that would free up the money. The, the actual allocation of it towards, you know, whether it's police or, you know, an additional code enforcement. Would, would be next year. So strictly tonight is simply the resolution.
Okay, that's helpful, um. And, um, any other thoughts from folks? Um, cause I know I, I said a lot, which is unusual for me.
No, I mean, I'll go on the record one more time. I've said it too, um, much like Darren has. That. How this happened, I thought was unfortunate. Mainly because. We built a public process to review all applications. We held numerous meetings about this project. We heard from many neighbors who gave up their evenings to come and hear from the applicant. To sit with the Development Review Board, to give us their personal insights on what they liked and didn't like. We. Took all of that feedback back into the process and addressed those with the developer. And what is frustrating is. Many, if not almost all of the concessions that. This settlement purports to have secured. Were already secured for free through the public process.
Correct.
But that wasn't known to many of the plaintiffs because they didn't attend the meetings of the public process.
Right.
And so at the eleventh hour. This lawsuit comes in, asks for several different. Changes or accommodations within the, the plans that were already agreed to by the developer. With the exception of this hundred thousand dollars, and then the hundred thousand dollars is layered with a poison pill. That if we don't take it, it is to go to the county government for a project that is never been considered for the town. So I don't know, I don't know where that money would go.
Right.
Or if it just sits forever in escrow. So I will be honest, I am very conflicted. About accepting the money, except for the fact that if we don't take it within the amount of time. It goes to a place that we can never access it later. And it is a hundred thousand dollars that we can put toward. Good and effective uses for public safety and parking, um, improvements. So, well, I don't like the idea of taking the money. I do like the idea of what the money can do. To make Kensington safer for pedestrians and bicyclists and the events that we hold in town.
Right. So I, I think you're exactly right, um. And, and, and again, I know for people, actually, I mean, there are only ten people on the call and I'm assuming everybody is familiar with the dynamics, but. Um, um, so, so I, I, I guess. I am understanding why we have to take it. But it really, my hope would be, and, and I hear what Darren's saying, that look, this is just for tonight as a placeholder to, to. To, to signal that we don't wanna let the money go. Um, but my hope would be between now and. When there's a final vote, we, we work together in a very transparent, very clear way to make sure that this doesn't become a precedent. To make sure that this doesn't become a precedent, because I don't think this is our, our best work. Um, but again, I mean, it's like, I know, but a hundred thousand dollars, um, but also that we make sure that the money. Really goes to benefit the most number of people in our community. Um, so that, so that the people who originally came up with this scheme. Um, 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 don't um, uh, don't, in the end, end up with. Their own personal uh, uh, traffic enforcement um, um, group, because as it is, as I said, we, we already have. A, a, a lot of, of, of Montgomery County police that are stationed around the town that aren't. Being able to be used for things that I think, given the, the. Significant challenges we've had about crime, real crime, um, we're not able to, to, to benefit. Um, and, and have that and, and so I'm thinking maybe there's a way to, to take this unfortunate. Um, chapter in our town and, and, and add that benefit and, and all, but it, it. I think it, it, it's going to take more transparent conversations and kind of courageous creative because again. I would not want when Warner Mansion or someone else is about to do the project for somebody to say, you know what, let's go ahead. I mean, the developer's gonna, I mean, how, how much would the developer pay to not have to have it tied up for another year in court, whatever? And, 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 and in other words, we've sort of. Made a model for what I think was bad behavior, so.
Thank you, John.
Yes.
Appreciate the comments.
Okay, tha- thank you and tha- thank you for letting me, because I know I was kind of verbose, but thank you.
But it's, it's a short meeting, so we have lots of time here today, so we're good. Um, okay, so if there are other, no other comments, we can get a uh, motion?
I'm making a motion to adopt resolution number R dash twenty dash twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, counsel.
Alright, we'll move down to number three.
Should we turn Nate back on?
We can turn Nate back.
Before you would see view is resolution number R dash twenty-one dash twenty twenty-three, a resolution of the mayor and town council of Kensington. Um, and we switch this resolution and Alex is going to share her screen.
This is the one in yellow.
Yeah, so this is white and yellow to make sure we have the right problems, so. We initially advertised to put in a parking zone in the town's metropolitan lot. Upon further discussion with the town attorney, um, this Ferguson, um. Basically told us that a, a zone is not appropriate for this, what we were trying to do is we have a number of vehicles. That are parking in the lot beyond the four hour restriction, they're moving their vehicles in the same lot. Which is preventing us from enforcing it because there's no restriction. Uh, so the town attorney Ferguson suggested that um, the council allow staff to amend the existing signs, the language of the signs. So we can enforce it, so there's no more than four hours parking within a twenty-four hour period as opposed to a zone, because the zone creates a few more problems for us. So the resolution we're presenting for you this evening uh, would amend the existing parking restrictions at the Metropolitan Avenue Parking Lot. At one oh four fifty Metropolitan Avenue by prohibiting parking for more than four hours total within any twenty-four hour period in. Uh, in one or a combination of the restricted spaces, except by permit, this would not affect the eighteen. Open spaces that run along the rail line, so those will remain eighteen spaces that are unrestricted. We have a number of businesses that have uh, um, commuter parking permits from the town that allow their employees to park there. This is specifically for the spaces that are against on the far side, the north side of the lot that wrap around on the other side. So what it would allow the code enforcement officer to do is, if your vehicle is parked there for more than four hours, we could issue a violation. Even if they moved the vehicle to another open space in the lot, this would prevent vehicles from circumventing the existing regulations. Uh, the zone was a little more difficult to enact. Um, and how it was explained to me is in order for us to move forward with a zone parking, we really need to deal with more street parking. As opposed to a private lot. Um, and it's something that, you know, they do in like Friendship Heights and it just didn't really fit what we were trying to do on a more specific basis.
Yeah, so these are your jam?
Yeah.
These are, which ones are staying?
Those will remain open and free?
Yep.
Those will be regulated and everything around here will be regulated and that's regulated. Who are, who, who generally is parking here right now?
The Medina employees.
Yeah, so where do you think they're going to go?
Uh, they're going to have to find other parking.
So it's just going to push the problem in the neighborhood, right?
Well, we have residential parking restrictions on most of our side streets around the train station. Um, I was advised that Safeway has put up new signs very recently because they are having. Like, believe it's Medina employees parking there as well, uh, we had worked out an agreement uh, between um. Uh, Warner Memorial Presbyterian Church and Medina, where their employees could park there and the shuttle would come and pick them up. Um, that doesn't seem to be working, uh, this will probably force them to do that and I would hope it will.
As long as we have a solution.
Yeah.
An alternative, I think that's good.
I mean, much of all this is.
It's pretty much all.
Zoned.
Yep, it's all permitted residential. I mean, council member Crimmins knows, we have individual parking in the park, taking up half the park.
Hmm.
Um, during long stretches of the day, uh, which are kind of the shots are able to enforce. Um, with the restricted parking there.
Is it worth? I forget, on the south side of the Mark parking lot, is it also restricted?
We have very few spaces there, um, if you were looking at the lot, you'll notice, uh, yep. So we, we only have a number, a few spaces on the south side, most of them belong to uh. Yeah, so we cannot enforce those, uh, we cannot tow, we cannot cite.
Yeah, and of ours now for these are.
Yeah.
Electric.
Yeah, that's right.
So, quick question, um, behind um, Spirit Club, we own the parking lot back there on Kensington Park. How many spaces are there?
There's eleven.
Eleven.
Uh, they are permitted out.
I, I understand that, but who are they permitted to?
Uh, most of them are permitted to trick trucks, there's a couple other companies that have.
Do they, do they pay?
They pay two hundred and fifty dollars a year for each space.
A year for each space?
Yep.
Do they use them?
Yes, yeah, that law is generally full. Uh, we actually run into an issue where uh, Spirit Club employees get there in the morning before trick trucks employees and take the spaces. And move before the violation's up. Uh, I'm not looking to put anything there at this moment because we do have. Street parking available because it's a parkway, so it hasn't become a huge issue yet, um, but maybe down the road.
County keeps telling us nobody has cars.
And it's this close to the train, so they're just going to take the train.
The, the train's picking up, um, you know, we've, we've hit over a hundred passengers from Kensington three times in the last six weeks. We haven't done that since pre-COVID, uh, it's definitely picking up, so uh, we have a lot more mark riders.
Yeah, the lot is definitely more full than it's.
And obviously, we know the issues with, with uh, individuals and um, coming to Baby Cat in the evening. Uh, so we have some parking issues in the area that we're also looking to address a little further down the ways.
Well, and, and this, this will become another problem and I, I am definitely for it, but the, the shopping center that is being built at the corner of Connecticut. And Flyers Mill is going to be able to accommodate, you know, most of the people that go, but not the people that work there. So that is going to be, you know, if you typically, if you have five employees, you're going to have five spaces. And where are they going to park? And that is um, yet to get up.
And of the six bays of retail that they plan to have there, they will have more than five employees and they will have.
Especially restaurants.
I mean, they'll, they'll fluctuate through the day, the bank will have certain hours, but the rest like, yeah, it will be fifteen to twenty. Employees needed to run that shopping center, to all, all of the tenants.
Problem is not going away, it just seems to be, keep getting worse, um, and I know I've talked with Matt about this and maybe some others, I think. We're approaching a point at which some type of parking district study should be re-upped. Because there have been so many changes and we just have more for development and more pressure. Um, so maybe that's something we can factor into our planning for next year.
I'm all for it, I've had through the DRB some conversations with the county that they. The idea of parking districts is something that is fading because they have a greater, their, their vision. Is to reduce the number of cars being used. Anywhere, and so the idea of, and they look at different, you know, areas of the county that have shifted. Rapidly, especially through COVID, like the, the tier decks in Bethesda and the tier decks in Silver Spring, but that's. Those are areas that were built out heavy office uses that changed completely overnight. We are a different mix of retail, residential um, scale. Um, but parking districts is something that, you know, they didn't say they're dead, but they're just like, they're not exciting.
Well, there's not enough benefit to the person, I, I have found, or nobody's proven to me that the person who's. Signs on to the parking district, well, what do I get out of it for letting people park in my lot at night or on weekends, I'm there. What is my benefit? No one's ever been able to explain that to me.
And, and then enforcement, we're obviously putting in different enforcement mechanisms for the lots that we can control. But we don't control any private agreements in private parking districts and what happens when there's.
Well, and they, they, and I, and I, the towing issue, you know, when they were towing heavily at. Kensington Shopping Center. I mean, everybody went ballistic because they literally, where you get out of your car and somebody jumped, I mean, they totally get away. And um, so they, they don't even do that in. So, you know.
But wouldn't, wouldn't the beginning, like the first step in a analysis for a parking district be a survey of what parking exists? That may not be, we've talked about that's underutilized, even if it's street parking or wherever, what is the actual capacity we have?
And also a survey of businesses like you just off the top of your head were calculating. For the new shopping center, what the employee parking load might be. And I. Because the county keeps dropping the number of bases that are required for the, which is crazy because I don't even think they think about employees.
No, and I would say if we're going to do it, what I, you know, just to put everything on the table, is. The other parking that's out there is street parking, which is public right of way in our purview. And just to have a discussion of, do we value that to be free? Or should we begin to think about parking, a paid for parking system? Um, as we've talked about with potentially the flats, you know, in a, a lot that would come under some agreement with us. That is at the start of looking at parking and seeing about using it as an asset to, to the town.
I agree, I think that should be.
Yep.
Part of a day's setting.
And also signage, improved signage for where to park. Wayfinding system for parking.
Kind of, yeah, and if there's a way, now we're getting way down off of here. It's still a needed conversation.
Yeah.
Uh, without great. Well, I mean, I, what I, one last thought on that, what I was going to say is. If there is a way to do the study that includes an analysis of how to get people. Out of their cars and walking and not clogging up the streets with driving. If they're coming here as a destination, either to go to work or to shop or to go to Baby Cat. Is there a way that we can limit the traffic burden on our streets by identifying locations? We can direct them to and then have people walking.
Yeah.
Yeah. Park your car once.
Yes.
Yeah.
Centrally located and try to, yeah.
Well, I know Medina had been, I'd under guessed the number of people that would bring, that residents were bringing cars. Probably not just one car, but possibly two cars, and that was part of the, the problem. And they really should have done a second level. I'm sure the money was part of it.
I mean, from what I understand, Silver Creek also has greater demand than they have supply for the forty-seven spots that they have.
Well, I think their problem is people, they're having to pay extra.
Yep.
Affordable apartment, they're not wanting to pay or can't pay.
No, they want the parking, they don't.
They want the parking, they just don't.
Yeah. Yep.
So. Um, and I think a lot of them are parking at the one oh four hundred. Either paying them or just parking them. But that above lot seems extremely busy now.
So Matt, I mean, the rest of the signs in the commercial district are for our parking as well.
Yeah.
And, and this resolution would effectively create a four hour limit within the. One parking lot.
Within the parking lot and, and the reason why Sue Ellen suggested this instead of the zone is because we control the lot. It's not like, even though we control parking on streets, this is a lot easier to maintain. So she was recommending just an amendment of the existing language and it will allow any, a little more flexibility on enforcement.
Um, but I, I guess what I'm wondering is, if, if we enforce this. Are they going to park four hours in the train station lot and then come around to Antique Row and park the rest of the day?
It's possible.
Grow and is there anything that we should be thinking about doing to broaden this to four hours in the town?
I don't know, well. I mean, yeah, with one code enforcement officer, I don't know how we could do that. Uh, and I don't know what the restrictions are, this is specific to the lot, so I don't know, I'd have to talk to Sue Ellen about doing something a little broader. Uh, obviously, you know, we, we are restricted on Howard Avenue, um, but. I would assume that they would move there, like I said, we do have, we, we, we reached out, we, we got an agreement between Warner Memorial Presbyterian and Medina. Um, and I think they've been reluctant to do it because they've just told their employees to park here for free. COVID's pretty much, you know, over at this point, um, you know, so we have a lot more vehicles at the train station. So this might push Medina to go back and, and work out that agreement.
Yeah, because that lot sits there empty.
They're empty every day.
Yeah.
Um, you know, and it was, it was, you know, a nice little plan, they were gonna. We worked out an agreement where they would resurface the lot, it needs resurface. They could park there during the day and the shuttle would just come and pick employees and bring them back and forth and. You know, I just think they realized that that wasn't silly for them to do it when there's free parking all over.
And close by.
And close by.
What prevents somebody from actually physically leaving the lot, say I park there for like four hours? And I go get some lunch and then I come back, is that? Have you left the lot, now you start all over again?
Total, no, yeah, that's four hours total within a twenty-four hour.
Or within that twenty-four hour period. Okay, so you gotta be taking pictures of cars.
Pretty much.
And really tracking.
My guess is the enforcement on this will be very heavy for a couple weeks.
Yeah.
And then it will pretty much go away.
Okay.
So.
Hopefully they're not listening to the council meeting.
Good thought.
Uh, but just, just to clarify, this is not the zone parking that we put out on Monday, this was completely, the language has changed.
Okay.
Intent has not changed, it's just the enforcement and the language has changed, so.
And are we giving any, I, I'm just thinking about, you asked a question about who's parking there and. Who therefore is impacted by the loss of those spots, is it the businesses along? I know that she, uh, like, uh, where the Oak is, they, they, yeah, Bunsen Rice, there's no parking, I mean, that.
Especially around lunchtime.
That lot was, the purpose of it was to be a lot for the stores. And so now, part of the reason I'm asking, so that's what I was.
Yeah.
Assuming was the case, then if that parking lot in front of those stores doesn't have any signage, our.
Oh, I, yeah.
There is a lot for sale that we have told that property to purchase adjacent to them. And maybe this will spur them.
Okay.
So. There's a prop, there's a property right next to them that they can purchase for parking and move the dumpster and they should.
Yeah, they should grab it.
Yeah.
Okay, well, maybe this. More people bring more cars, so. But I, I for Medina though, I mean, you still have visitors, it's a great visitor lot, I mean, you're only going to, not going to visit grandma for over four hours typically.
Hmm.
So, you know, I can certainly visit for that, so, you know. Okay, um, so if anyone, if you can motion?
I'll do it, we'll move to.
Uh, any questions for the map? Sorry. Yes, yeah, yeah.
Oh, no, yeah, just.
Yeah, we're still working on this yellow piece of paper. Let's see if he can.
Hmm.
Okay.
Okay, um.
Good.
Okay, I move that we adopt resolution number R dash twenty-one dash twenty twenty-three. Um, as amended, is that right?
No, just.
No.
Okay, we, okay, alright, um, which would, a resolution to authorize. Town manager to amend the existing parking restrictions in Metropolitan Avenue Parking Lot.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, council.
One more?
Um, Mayor Nelson, I would like to thank the entire town staff, uh. For this resolution, this is resolution number R dash twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three, a resolution of the mayor and town council of Kensington. Proclaiming November to be municipal government work month in Kensington, Maryland, uh, this is the town staff's favorite resolution every year. Uh, we have our flag out front in front of town hall.
And who found that flag?
Uh, that would be the mayor. Uh, but no, really, um, we have a great staff here, um. And I'm just, I cannot be more supportive of them and how supportive of them of this town and and everyone here and. This really is, uh, for them, so.
We are indeed an exceptional town for our size, if, I mean, a lot of people don't understand all the municipalities in Montgomery County. But for our size, our huge business district, our eclectic housing and stock of. Um, whether apartments, types of homes we have, it's just, um, you don't see that in.
Uh, we are very unique in the state.
Very.
Um, for the size of our residential population, because I have a commercial district that we have, the number of state highways, railroads.
We got a little bit of everything.
Places that deal with everything that we do.
Yeah.
The size of our staffs.
Not to add, the number of parks that we have.
Yeah.
And how well they're kept up, they, I mean, it is.
Yeah, good for the staff.
Yeah. Good, so we need a motion. Um, to uh, declare that November is municipal government.
I knew that we adopt resolution number R dash twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three to declare. November municipal government work month in Kensington, Maryland.
Is there a second?
A second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, now we're in public comparisons, if anyone has anything to discuss. Or ask questions that are not on the agenda, please come to the, to the speaker.
Um, Leslie Olson, Wheatley Street, so, um, two things real quick. I don't think the parents that let their children play on the railroad track realize how fast the trains come around the corner westbound. Maybe there could be just a little something in one of the flyers that go out.
When you say children, are you talking about young children, teenage children?
No, young, young with their parents. Parents are one place, the kids are somewhere else on the other side of the track. Looking in, I I I walk so much, I see this and I. One time is fine, but I see it over and over again, the weather is so nice and, um. Those Amtrak trains fly and it's all you can do to get across, even when you know that, you know. Um, I I I just don't see a parent having the time to go. Get their child and get it out of the way, so.
Describe where this is happening, Leslie.
It's all right there at the train station.
You mean right at the crossing?
At the crossing.
And it's, it's, it's both ends, I mean, we have people on the tracks, both.
Where at St. Paul.
East and west, not only at the crossing, but east and west.
On either side, so the child could be twenty, thirty feet down on the track. And the parents are in, now, whether it's a nanny or a mother, I, you know, I don't know, but, um. The parents are talking to another adult, the adult is talking to another adult, I won't say this as a parent. Um, the kids are, you know, busying around on the track, maybe they're putting coins down, maybe they're doing something else. Throwing rocks, um, but it happens enough that, um, they're just, they're lucky. Um, and and I think maybe just acknowledging that in a newsletter or something.
I'm not sure you need, a newsletter is a good way, I mean, it doesn't hurt, you almost need signage up there that.
Yeah, it's.
Green tracks are dangerous.
There's some, there are signs that say.
But they're right at the crossing.
A crossing only on the designated area.
Yeah.
Um, but it's a shame that also have to say, don't play in the tracks.
I I know, when I'm at the dog park, I look up the slope, and this is quite a way south of the station. And see kids just walking along the tracks and.
Yeah, you can see them walking on the track.
And it it's not just kids, it's adults, it's the train enthusiasts that wanna get a better picture of the train and, I mean, they'll go thirty, fifty yards down. So, I mean, CSX is well aware of it, you know.
They're well aware of it because we've told them or have they seen it?
They know, they have staff there pretty frequently, they know what's going on, you know, they'll say something to someone, but people take risks.
But they, but they also refuse to give us any options for viable crossings that are safe. They will not entertain any conversation around. Improving our crossings, our crossing even.
Well, what they would like to do is that the crossing isn't like your train.
They would like to remove. Uh, so it's not CSX, so the CSX is not responsible for putting any kind of mechanism to stop you there. That was MTA, MTA is the one that had the mechanism there, MTA is the one that removed it ten, twelve years ago. Um, so if, you know, if we are able to get further along. And get a mechanism there, not only in Kensington, I mean, there's nothing the whole way up the Brunswick line, I mean, there's nothing. In your park, there's nothing in Gatorsburg and Metropolitan Grove, I mean, all the way up to Point Rock, there's nothing there. So it's something MTA needs to address, you know, entire length of the, of the Brunswick line. I mean, there's, there's nothing there warning you when a train's coming. Um, and there hasn't been for a number of years, but, um, you know, Alex and I can reach back out to CSX, see if we get some signage up, we've already. Uh, met with, um, a couple residents, uh, with regards to some incidents that happened on the crossing. With regards to bicycles and and, you know, getting some signage to dismount. For your bicycle, um, and possibly, yeah, and possibly expand. Um, the crossings slightly, we're a little limited because of the railing and the platforms, but we'll see if we can do something to, uh, solidify that, so.
Where we have the B and O, um, banner, which may still be on. Okay, to switch out that banner to something about a safety warning about trains kill. You know? It's fun, it's fun to look at.
That's the area that would.
Yeah.
Might not help.
Something that's, something that's, there are signs, but you you've gotten used to the signs now, you just might see them.
And, I mean, to this point, I would, you know, an improved upgrade crossing is the goal. But even if that were built, that's not stopping what's happening here, these are kids going.
Yeah, further down.
Sixty yards down, up at, you know, you can see them behind the cement pillars of the dog park.
Right.
And then, to be honest, at the end of St. Paul Street. It's. For some, just faster to cross the tracks than to walk down and cross at the upgrade crossing. Um, I mean.
I see that.
You can put up fences on both sides, like.
We can, can we?
No, I'm just saying like, they're, so long as there's a, a way. The people feel that is a risk worth taking to shave forty-eight seconds of their walking.
Okay, number two.
Okay.
Um, the, um, I noticed that the area at Flyers Mill in Connecticut now is having, uh, some work, work has begun.
Mm-hmm.
E- even if it's grading, and I'm wondering if there is now a plan for how. Uh, for that intersection, as well as where cars are gonna come out and how they're gonna get out. I've never really seen anything, and, um, has it been finalized?
Uh, well, I actually just had this, had an email to, uh, to another resident on, um, Oberon regarding the same thing. Oh, you know, when planning approved the, um. Approved the, the project, there was not a condition in which they had to solve this problem, there was a suggestion. That they looked back at it, we have been working with State Highway with, for well over a year. To try to find out a solution for this, they have come up with an idea. But that idea has not been completely formulated, it's gotta be studied. It's gotta then go to, um, the.
Office of Traffic Safety.
Office of Traffic, I mean, it's, there's a process in which to do this. So, basically, the shopping center will be completed. And hopefully, within ten years, State Highway will finally solve this problem, I mean, I I don't wanna be.
The permit will be issued regardless.
The permit had nothing to do with.
The, the permit, the permit has been issued and, um, one of the topics that will be discussed in the staff will be discussed in State Highway. We'll be able to provide an update in the summer, more likely January, is with regards to this intersection, um, and we'll be addressing it, um. Soon.
But, like the, like the flashing beacon at Wheatley, how long have we been waiting for that?
Twenty seventeen.
This is how they move. So, I I don't wanna get people's hopes up that they're gonna solve the problem, but, you know, when I, one of the, when I talked to the other resident. Says sometimes you have to let the chaos happen in order for them to, to move.
Well, then it should move really quickly because.
Well, they don't.
There's gonna be a lot of chaos.
Yeah, they they do not move.
Okay.
But I, I, I feel bad having to say.
When you say you didn't see the plans, you mean for any reconfigured intersection, you. Do you, you've seen how the traffic is supposed to flow?
Well, I've seen sketches and things like that.
Right, they'll be exiting through that parking lot.
It looked like it, they were coming out where the seven eleven.
Correct, they have, they're.
And then, I don't understand that, how do they come out and then make a left turn? How do they get out? The cars are already coming around the other side, they've already stopped.
Well, you can make a left turn out of that little shopping center.
Can and safely.
It's legal, but physically.
Yeah, no, it's not easy.
Right.
It's almost impossible, and and you've already got your.
Right.
Um, can, you know, coming down Flyers Mill to make a right on Metropolitan, those cars have already stopped. And now they're in full movement coming around, so there's no, you you don't see.
Yeah.
You you just have a constant flow of cars.
So, State Highway is gonna look at moving the stopping, the the stop bar, the the line. For eastbound Flyers Mill that turns right onto Metropolitan. Between you and me, we're over there all the time, I mean, that's right, we're related. The vehicles that are going east on Flyers Mill to then go onto Metropolitan. The amount of traffic that goes through the intersection of Metropolitan is so small that they, it's like a yield. Is how that stop sign operates, they give no thought to the fact that there is vehicles entering and exiting the the seven eleven lot. And it is precarious. Um, that, that's.
And even if they stop, they're still. Moving ahead, they've they've gone.
Yes.
Fifty feet before they get to that intersection, and so, I mean, basically, you've got the right of way, you just keep going. So.
Yes.
Okay.
So. Hopefully, in our lifetime, it will be fixed. But I'm skeptical.
I I I just don't understand why development occurs without all these pieces put together.
I can't disagree with that, I. Well, I, redoing an intersection is extremely expensive and there's a. You know, for the developer, if he was building a huge building and, you know, that costs so much money. Then they would have some responsibility towards redoing that intersection, this is a small project, they're not required to do that.
Mm-hmm.
And that's why, but the State Highway has put, um, uh, applied for grants. For this intersection, so that when they do come up with a plan, they will have the money, hopefully, if we get the grants to implement it.
We should have an update in January.
And is there a layout then for the area?
Yep.
For seven eleven is, where that roadway will be, or not yet?
No, there's a plan, uh, there's a plan, it's over with the Office of Traffic and Safety. What they're trying to figure out is the pedestrian movements, they figured out the vehicle movements, they need to figure out pedestrian movements to make sure it's safe. Then, uh, basically the funding methods.
Right.
Um, so we should have an update, hopefully in January, uh, to kinda get a better idea.
Cause it's, it's in the study, right, and then they're gonna have to go and engineer.
Seen it, you've seen it in the pedestrian bicycling access, um, in the BIPPA, in the BIPPA plan that you reviewed as part of our working group. It's that, but they have to figure out the pedestrian movement like you had raised in that discussion.
I mean, there's a dumpster, there's parking spaces somewhere, if they're gonna cut from behind and go across. You, you have to be able to walk, right, there's no, there are no sidewalks, right now you just kind of cut through the middle.
Mm-hmm.
Of a lot, okay.
Yeah.
And so on that, in that plan, they've detailed it, or they've just?
I mean, it's laid out there, right?
Well, yeah, like, uh, the the issue is how they get in with the pedestrians in a safe manner, that's what they're trying to figure, that's what Utes is trying to figure out now. Um, State Highway understands that this is about a fourteen-month build on the project. Um, unfortunately, we lost our, our district engineer that was pushing this. Um, so, you know, hopefully Derek will take this up and and we can get something realistic.
And and that's another frustration for us, is we, we get assigned somebody, we work with that person, we start making progress, and then they promote them. And they're gone. And now you have to start all over again with a different person. And who's, and and the districts are huge, so we're not, we're, we're not their only customer, we are one of many customers. So, they have a lot of projects going on, so it it's just a frustration, because the, this. One particular person we've been working with has been fabulous, we just lost him. So, it's, you know, it's just, so we've lost three or four months of not meeting.
Yeah.
At least.
April was our last.
Was that our last week, so, you know.
Well, anything that that's gonna be decided or developed, come before in a public forum, um. To have discussion or is it just?
I don't know how State Highway.
Probably not, not on this project.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we could bring it, but there wouldn't be a public hearing from the state for this, they're basically just modifying the existing. Intersection to create, they're basically proposing a roundabout. And an elongated roundabout, and what they can, what they just need to make sure is that if they do this, is it safe for the pedestrians? Are there enough locations pedestrians can be in a safe zone to cross to the next section?
Roundabout, it is in that plan, I had a comment about that, okay.
Hmm.
So, it's, um.
But I don't recall. The traffic through the seven eleven parking.
The State Highway's told us is, is that they're very favorable towards the plan, they like it a lot. They just need to figure out pedestrian movements and then the funding mechanism, as the mayor mentioned. Uh, there has been a federal grant applied for by our district and State Highway to, um, help with this. Um, we have discussed providing some funding towards the project as well, uh, and maybe they can just put it in the area like that.
That was the dual pedestrian walkway that was existing and then they had put another one across, which. To me would be a disaster, so you've got it on.
Yeah, just to clarify, that, a cop, that changes, what you looked at would change the current. Plan, which is the exit out of the, the seven eleven parking lot, it totally reconfigures it. So, your comment about where the pedestrian path is placed, the one on Concord.
Yeah.
Uh, across Metropolitan, those are the issues that they need to look at, because we've raised the point that. This may block traffic if there's, if there's like a bunch of kids crossing, like a preschool or whatever. There, there's better places to probably put that one, so they have to look at it, I think that's the part of the study.
Okay. Alright.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Sure.
Thank you, love.
Thank you.
Your slides.
Okay. Anybody else online? Alright, um, I think that's it. Okay, so, uh, we will be meeting on Zoom next month. In December and most likely January and February as well. And, uh, and then we'll come, we'll read, see what the weather is in March and, uh, and then come back in person. Alright, did I get a motion to, uh, adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
A second.
Alright, all is in favor?
Aye.